All right, I'm gonna call the September ninth, 2025 meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. I'd suggest we move those until after we do the pre-conceptual consultation and then we can work our way through some of the ordinance discussions and the master plan communication. Sarah, motion to move the approval of the minutes? Seconds? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so first up is Jim Snyder, pre-conceptual consultation of 115 Asby Road.
Good evening. So, we were here, I was here, in late 2023 for pre-conceptual on a small subdivision we wanted to do of our, cutting a house lot out of our forty-four acre, forty-eight acre lot. We didn't anticipate coming back to the board again this soon, but we decided that we would like to. That one was approved in February of last year, and I brought a copy of it because what I'd kind of like to say, in the interest of keep it simple, is there anything you'd like us to do differently from what we did then?
Yeah, or there's more than one, Sarah.
We have, there's been some, acknowledging that there's been some turnover on the board, and I'm not sure if you've done anything with the regulations since then. But we, we had some requests for waivers on that one and regarding not delineating wetlands on the remainder, which does have some wetlands, but it's, if we subdivide this piece out, it will still have almost forty acres, and I don't think more than five of it could be wet. And as I said up last time, I'd be happy to walk around out there with the board to make, to obviate that fact.
So is, the plan would be to delineate wetlands on the proposed six acre lot, but then on the remainder of the forty minus six, forty-two?
And I know you guys can't make any decisions on anything tonight. If there is anything that you can say you'd like to see done differently this time, that would be helpful. Otherwise, I'll ask surveyors to prepare a plan very similar to that one. One thing I remembered, we struggled with a little bit on that one, I, I think it was the locust map. The ordinance then, and I don't know if it's changed, called for a specific scale, and we all realized that for this particular map, it didn't make, it would have required a whole nother piece of paper to do the locust map at that scale. So, I don't remember if that was a waiver, if the board just decided at that point, let's do what makes sense instead of following what?
I was a little bit, this seems like such a straightforward subdivision. I was, couldn't figure out why you wanted a pre-conceptual.
To say, is there anything different you think you'd like this time than we did last time? And I don't want to take up a lot of your time, but if there is anything that's obvious, then it'll, it'll, it'll save me a lot of work preparing it. The only thing that, if I could finish, the only thing that, that I think, and we, we recognized this last time, the zoning ordinance, and I don't remember the exact wording, but it calls for not creating odd-shaped lots or something to that effect. This, the remaining almost thirty-eight acres or whatever, will be an odd-shaped lot. It's an odd-shaped lot now, it always has been, there's nothing I can do about that. But, odd-shaped, fortunately, is subjective decision.
Yeah, it's always better if it's, you know, the remainder is not shaped, but the, the new lot you're creating is, you know, pretty close to a rectangle.
So, so that proposed lot used to be an orchard, it used to be owned by the stores Farm and Loudon. I called it out as six, six point five acres by doing the little outline on Google or, or Google Maps. Might be a little more, it might be a little less. It's basically the field on the corner where Asby makes the big turn towards 106, and it's completely surrounded by a stone wall.
And there's no wetlands on the, on the?
I anticipate that a wetland scientist might, might find some. It's, it's not, there is a low spot that probably jurisdictionally is, but it's basically grassland with a little, little neck of woods coming into it. Sorry.
The one thing that came to my mind last week when we received this, when I received it in my email, was the non-conforming part of it. Did you not want to sell that much, or why wouldn't you come right down to the border of the, the previous lot? So that you don't get into a difficulty later on, you know, later owners of the land, and with a non-conforming piece in there, should it get subdivided again?
Well, everyone says this, but we have no intention of any further subdivisions after this. Someone could, they couldn't, they, by current standards, they couldn't turn that into a lot. The only way that could become part of another lot is if it wrapped around back up to Asby Road. The reason we left it out, we really didn't, we would have rather maybe just done a four acre lot, but every way I tried to configure it, it didn't make any sense unless we took the whole field. So, that section between the previous subdivision and the proposed one is woods, and it's, it's our old sugar bush, we don't tap it anymore, but we kind of wanted to keep it.
That was the only question that I had right off the bat, came to mind, is why wouldn't you want to marry that, that border?
Yeah, if you were-
Because, you know, we, we don't live forever, and, you know, some future owners of the land, whether it's, you know, fifty, hundred years from now, it's, it's gonna be that odd shape that's gonna be right in there, so.
I think a more likely, the more likely outcome is that one of the owners of the two lots, at some point might want to do a lot line adjustment and absorb the piece in between, because it's not enough frontage to be a lot on its own.
Yeah, how much frontage is on Ludgell Road between the two lots?
I don't know.
It's less than?
Certainly less than three hundred feet, might be two hundred, might be less. The other thing I meant to acknowledge is, some of you I don't know very well. Some of you have been friends for a long time, some of you, before I retired, I've done work in your homes. I think we established last time that only one of you need recuse themselves because they're a family member. I'm perfectly comfortable with everyone else, as long as you guys are. And see no reason for anyone else to recuse themselves.
Right, as, yeah, for those who were here in 2023, was there anything that came up with the plan that they had that you had questions about, or things that were missing that would have been helpful to have in advance?
It wasn't-
And it looked like a, a well-done plan, but I, I didn't dive into it because it's not the subdivision for today.
Yeah.
I have, I have all the minutes on my computer, but I didn't want to drag this out.
Oh, that's fine, I mean, it looked great to me, I'm just giving the people who are here forward a chance to-
It was some sort of a process that we're utilizing, and you were one of the first ones we used, using that process, and-
The checklist?
Yeah, I think it was a checklist.
Well, here's the timeline, I came in for pre-conceptual on May twenty-fifth, April twenty-fifth, and if these go in the minutes, then it'll be easy for people to go back and read the minutes if they want to. So, the pre-conceptual was four twenty-five, twenty-three. There's a waiver request that I have a copy of, but it's not dated, so I don't know how you would find it without me sending it to you, which I can't. There, there was a completeness review on January twenty-third of last year, and then the subdivision hearing, and we did it as a expedited, so it was all done in one meeting. It was on February thirteenth of, of last year.
But to finish my comment, I think it was, was a checklist that we were using, and we're, it was new to us also, and we made a comment, I remember making a comment, I thank you for being patient with us, as well as we worked through some technicalities with you.
Yeah, those, those minutes revealed some kind of inconsistency, I think, between the checklist and the application, if, if I recall, and it's in the minutes.
But we ran through them, and everything was kosher, though.
Yes, but please do the, it works, it works much better for the, the board if you actually do the waiver request and put in that you want this, whatever you want, different in the locus, so that we can just approve them all and then it's done with, rather than come, revisit it.
Yeah, basically, I'll just send you the same waiver request as last time and add that in, because, because we discovered that in the meeting.
I don't recall anything that hasn't already been mentioned, obviously, I recuse myself like them, but I was sitting here.
Josh, Megan, anything you want to add?
Good, all right.
So it sounds like similar to what you did last time, would be, may have appropriate here?
That's what I'm gonna tell them, I'm gonna give the surveyor that plan and say, make it look like this. It's gonna be a different surveyor, because I have problems with that, but.
Just put the same exact shape, just slide it up? All right.
Yeah, slide it up.
Uh, it sounds good, so we'll look forward to the application when you have that ready.
All right. I, I don't need those back, take that one back, you've got the digital copy.
All right, thanks, Jim.
Thank you for your time tonight, what's, what else is on the agenda, do I want to say?
Yeah, you do.
We're gonna talk about potential-
Don't you miss it here?
-ordinance changes, and then an additional chapter to the master plan that we're still working on for solid waste management.
I'll sit down for a minute, but I might sneak out.
All right. August twenty-sixth draft meeting minutes, did, Kelly, you receive any suggested changes in advance?
I did, so there's two changes, they're pretty minor. One of them is that, at one point I referenced Joshua talking about the building permit cap, and I put four percent. It's actually a three percent cap, so it's almost a typo, but because it's an actual error, I'm gonna bring it up. So, the four percent should be three percent. And then there's another one, on line two fifteen, it says, he feels that if the rear, and this is referencing something that Joshua said, he feels that if the rear commercial unit is never occupied, this will have amounted to rezoning the lot, and that she suggested change is just adding at the end of that sentence in violation of the ordinance, to make it clear that he feels that this would be a violation. Those are the only two ones that I got, does anybody have anything else?
Just the punch list that I had requested, adding you to the, the to-do list?
Action items, we-
Action items, you were to make the-
The action items aren't part of the minutes, that was just in the email.
Okay.
Um, so in the email, that was a good reminder that I had that to-do item, and then-
Okay, I thought it was in the minutes.
Nope.
We used to tack them on the bottom of the minutes, I thought that was helpful for people, but.
Um, I can certainly add that on if, if the board would like me to, but that's up to you guys.
I mean, I'm fine with it being off, it's, it's something usually just a discussion after the act of one person. All right, any opposition to the two proposed changes that, those were Joshua's suggestions?
Uh, just the second one was mine, yes.
Second was Joshua, the first one, I think Beth Lehrer pointed out, the four percent versus three percent.
All right, I have no problem with any of those, any, anything else.
Is the building cap really three percent?
Yep.
Yes.
Uh, yep, it's on page fifty of the ordinance, I, I double-checked her.
Well, it's the convenience conception.
All right, is there a motion to move the minutes as amended with those two amendments?
Motion to move the minutes as amended.
I will second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Good enough, one, two. All right, like, the next one up was the continuing discussion on the sludge ordinance, and this has been a few months, and so a reminder, this was a, the idea was to have a proposal to send to the select board with the idea that the select board, if they want, they can change, and they can adopt an ordinance as a selectman's ordinance, but not as a proposed zoning ordinance.
I had made a comment that it's not really an ordinance, I mean, I don't know if the technical word makes a difference. I think it's technically a regulation, and, and it's written as though it's an ordinance, and, I don't know, it felt confusing to me. You know, the legislative body votes on ordinances, and, and, and the selectmen cannot create ordinances. So I, I had some problem with that nomenclature, but.
Yeah, and I think regardless of whether it's selectmen can in other circumstances, that the, that RSA one forty-seven one, if I recall, does use the word regulation, so that just makes sense to be consistent with the statute that we're citing as the-
Right.
-authority for the selectmen to take that action, so.
And the word ordinance appears in it, you know, under times.
Change ordinance to reg.
And I have the, I'm, I'm referring to this old, I don't know what the date is, I feel like it's like six months old, but-
Yes.
Something four, five months.
This was the meeting that Brendan had a, an emergency or-
Brendan wasn't here, right?
He wasn't here, so I ran that meeting, I got my notes, and I got the comment that you said, change ordinance to regulation. We put in the minutes, asked the conservation commission for a definition of sludge.
Contaminated material.
Logan wanted higher fines, so we left it where we were gonna invite Kelly and Jeff Hubble.
So if I recall, I, I don't remember if it was Ken Sterns, but it, he'd come back and, and just, we had that letter a few meetings ago that he read, and it was sort of high-level, or I understood it as sort of high-level, we need to do something about this, but not a specific comment for changing the definition. In drafting that definition, I, I have that language at the end, any, any other specific things you want to list, which is a helpful way to just make sure things are included, but the, my goal, at least for the initial definition, is to be broad, and to hit, you know, is, we don't need to list out every specific way that something could be contaminated, but if it's going to have this detrimental effect on, you know, peop- human health or the environment, it's, it's gonna be included. Are there any suggestions or specific things that any board members want to suggest to the select board? They include after-septage sludge, I mean, we had talk about the heat-treated, formerly contaminated, or maybe still contaminated dirt, I still don't know the best word to describe that product. Greg, I think you've, you looked at that one a little bit more, right, is there a?
Right, and my inclination was to go with a broader definition, kind of like you were saying, like, treated contaminated, probably, so anything that has, has been contaminated at any time, that's been treated, treated down.
Yeah, so what I was thinking here is, we've got that, that broad definition, any waste that because of quantity, concentration, or concentration of any physical, chemical, or infectious characteristics, may, if not properly treated, stored, or disposed of, cause or contribute to an increase in mortality or illness, or pose a present or potential threat to human health or the environment. And then the second sentence is contaminated materials specifically includes septic sludge, and we could say, comma, and, is there like a, a phrase that would encompass that soil that was, in such discussion, like, is it?
That was either-
Dirty dirt.
Heat-treated, like dirty dirt, I don't know, it will, will get us there, but what is the industry?
It was thermally, thermally-treated, uh, contaminated soils.
Thermally-treated contaminated soil.
And I think Kelly Short, you know, the conservation commission, that's where they might have a, um, a, a suggestion. Also, when we were considering the, uh, what's that road called? What's, what's the road called that's just north of your house, Greg?
Wyven.
Wyven, the, the, the landowner who was dealing with that, he had a word for this stuff.
Yeah.
That sort of came from the industry.
And I'm trying to remember what it was called in the DOT, Department Two.
Yeah, it came from DOT, maybe, and I don't remember what that was.
Okay, I can-
But it was a word, and I thought it was a little bit euphemistic, but maybe it's the, maybe that, whatever that name was, is the standard word for it.
Okay, so I'll look for the, the, whatever the, whatever phrase DOT used in that thing, which I think, it was like they will have done more of that, look for the DOT phrase for-
The conservation commission probably has an opinion about it.
-treated or thermally-treated, and I think Kelly Short will be here in a little bit as the plan, so we can ask her as well, we can circle back. In terms of the fine, I mean, I, I have no particular preference, I will say that all of these, when their daily fines add up so fast when you deal with an actual enforcement action, and, two fifty for the normal code violation in-
Because it's fifty dollars a day, from the, starting from the day that you get noted, that the landowner gets notified.
Right, in addition to the cost of fixing it.
Of remediation.
Right, so.
I don't have like a particular argument in this, it just seemed like a low number, and it's-
Let me see what the, that was, yeah, I, I had no particular reason for that number, let me see what the sixteen, seventy-six.
Does the consumer protection act have a per beam fine?
Well, there's a, a normal zoning ordinance fine, which I'll pull up.
Oh, that's right.
Six seventy-six.
Thermal remediation appears to be the term of art.
Thermally-remediated soil?
Yeah.
All right, it's two seventy-five for, for-
Yeah, but the- It's not remediated, I mean, that's what we're sort of sub-silentio arguing, that it's not remediated, so that's why it's euphemistic.
Right.
Well, maybe we can put it in scare quotes if we want to.
All right, so, again, it, we're not citing this as the authority, because it would be coming through the select board, but the fine, if this were a zoning ordinance and there was a violation, would be two hundred and seventy-five dollars, and then it's higher for subsequent offenses, for each day the violation continues after the date they receive written notice from the municipality.
And that is in the what?
That's the zoning, the zoning, six seventy-six, yeah.
Two seventy-five per day? Whoa, that adds up fast.
Yes.
That adds up fast.
Well, the real, but in fact, the real cost is in remediation that they're going to be required, you know.
Would the town or the town administrator have discretion to, you know, fifty dollars or two hundred and seventy-five dollars a day, and it went on for six months, which is, seems like not unreasonable that it might? Would the town administrator have discretion to waive it, or, or?
I think, like anything, it's sort of, you have, you'd have, you know, you can threaten the lawsuit to enforce, and then there's room to settle, and so they can always come to an agreement to get something done.
Yeah, that would be a select board function, you know.
Right.
The, the town administrator certainly could recommend, oh, right, this is a regulation of the select, yeah.
Right, so they have the authority to sue, that kind of thing.
No question would be, thinking practically about this, at what stage in, like, for example, the Wyven Road example, at what stage of the road or driveway or wherever this might be used, building process, is this enforceable in that how do we know someone's dirt is thermally-treated or not? And are we in the business of going and testing dirt now?
So, I, I think it's sort of a longstanding inherent problem with all zoning is,
Of course.
It's, you, you sort of, when you find out about stuff, and it's usually, you know, a neighbor notices that something happened, and they complain and, and those kind of things, but it's not a, towns don't go around checking your property to make sure you're using it in conformance with the zoning ordinance.
I, I get it, and neighbors get into conflict all the time, and so, neighbor can be upset about something, person's not using dirty dirt, neighbor reports it is dirty dirt, now how do we, we're now litigating who's right, and how do we, we can't just slap a two seventy-five, uh, fine a day on somebody without actual evidence?
Yeah, so that's, that's a SCOT problem, but what I've typically seen, you know, in other towns, is if the town thinks there's an issue, they work with the code enforcement officer to see what they can discover and learn, they try to build a case, basically. And you do all that in advance, and there's-
People don't truck in large volumes of dirt without like somebody having a record of who dumped it, and it's weird.
Right, and there's weigh slips, you know, so if they buy dirt or whatever, those trucks, they have a weigh slip.
Yeah.
And so there's a record, there's a paper trail as to where that dirt came from.
I'm picturing landowner A standing on his own land with his teaspoon, getting a scoop of dirt from landowner B and getting charged with trespassing.
Yeah, I believe that there's only still one company, Molten, that's, that's in that business. They actually came and gave a presentation, I think it was to the select board, on the process, which was interesting. I would, I would guess if neighbors-
Do you know what exact term they use for their products?
You know, I've been sitting here trying to remember, it's been a couple of years, and I just, I don't remember. Do you remember the name of the vendor?
No.
Yeah, and it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily matter, because it's, it's just a-
EMSI, or?
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Sounds right, yeah. Can we look at EMSI's?
I believe we did, back when we started having this conversation originally, and I, I don't think we actually came up with like a better word than the ones we're using currently.
Okay.
I remember looking up their website.
Yeah.
So, um, at least for now, in the, the version that we're sending to the select board, we can say thermally-treated contaminated soil? Any problem with that as sort of a placeholder in the select board?
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's-
Needs to change it, they can.
Yeah. You know, and other similar products, but it's-
Again, it's just, it's just an example already, so it-
It's such as, yeah.
Right, okay. Or, in addition to that and septic sludge, sort of the ones that have been on our mind, are there any other ones that people have thought?
PFAS, and PFAS stuff called out?
So, that was gonna be my next thing. We write this broadly, whether we like it or not, whether someone brings in dirt or not, everything has it at this point. So, I don't know how to regulate that away, um.
And we've only known about PFAS and PFOs for less than ten years at this point, right, and this is, you know, the, what's next?
But I, I think there's a difference between moving just soil among lots, where we all have some amount of contamination, and taking soil from St. Cobain's backyard and, and bringing it up here, or something along those lines that presumably would trigger some sort of cleanup.
Yeah, I, they've been concentrated and then reintroduced into the environment.
Yeah, we can't not write the regulations, but everything is-
And maybe that's-
That last sentence?
And maybe that's where the, what is it, the, sorry, circle to your one, it's quantity or concentration, so maybe that's the piece where they would hang their hat, that if, you know, the selectmen aren't saying, everything has some low concentration, we're gonna enforce this, as you have to hit a certain level.
Are we defining that level?
No, you sort of leave it to be flexible, and then the town would have to show that it's, you know, risen to the standard where the ordinance is intended. Rich, sorry to that.
That last sentence, where it says contaminated materials specifically include, can we phrase that contaminated materials such as?
And we could add a but not limited to, and, and they both-
But not limited to sludge and thermally-treated, so that way it, it leaves the door open to other things that should have been interpreted.
And you hope that it operates prophylactically, rather than-
And you hope that it operates prophylactically rather than uh um rather than setting up the town to enforce.
Right, right, but I think if we if we tried to name specific things and leave one out.
Yeah.
And that's that's why I separated the two to make it really clear that here's the definition, and we're just giving you some examples of right ones.
But where where it says specifically, I think it should take strike the word specifically.
Um.
That's why it says include.
Where are you looking?
I think the the, I mean, the reason I I put specifically include is to basically say that if someone is taking these two things, there is no argument that they are not included in in that definition. And where they were the the genesis of some of the desire to create an ordinance or a regulation like this, that we just want to make sure that they're.
I mean, I I'm just interpreting that sentence as being the. This is what we're talking about. Everything else is fair game, but but these are the big no-no's, you know, as opposed to saying such as.
That's why it says includes.
Right.
Specifically includes but not limited to.
I mean, uh, what I'll say is I think all of those phrases, the ones you've suggested, and all of them get you to the same place that when someone's looking at interpreting an ordinance.
Right. Uh, I think Joshua's point is good about prophylactic. When I was researching this issue, I talked to ESMI. And said, oh, what time are you from Canterbury? Oh, that's the only town around here where you where you can do. No.
Really?
They knew the ordinances at all the surrounding towns, and we're the only one that didn't have an uh something that said you can't. So prophylactic.
So they've been dumping it here for years, huh?
Alright, if we're moving down, the one piece we haven't talked, is there, are there any other, or I'll say verbs, but any other act actions that we wanna list? It says, no person shall store, stockpile, spread, release, or otherwise discharge any contaminated materials within the boundaries of the town of Canterbury.
Sounds fairly comprehensive.
Hope that gets most of it without being overly redundant, okay.
Yeah. Release, spread.
Like any other law, somebody will find the wiggle room into it and so it'll have to be amended, but I think it's.
Yeah. Alright, and then I, any preference for at least as a suggested starting point for the select board? Do you wanna raise the fifty to two seventy five to just match the? Um, the zoning fine, not that that's the authority, but as a, you know, if the goal is scare people into complying.
Okay.
Yeah, it seems like it should at least be in the same general ballpark.
Right, and it doesn't seem like it's unfairly high if it's the same as what you could do for.
Does it say up to, up to or?
Uh. Pretty sure the statute is it's two seventy five, and it's also, if you can prove your case, it's mandatory. The court doesn't have discretion.
I would kind of maybe argue for lower fifty so that it doesn't seem. So out of hand, because I think these things really do take months to to um to resolve themselves and and. Uh, you know, you wanna give the selectmen some bargaining room, which is not the um. Not not given incentive to say, well, I'm in for a million dollars, I might as well just leave it there or something.
Which is why I suggested up to, so the selectmen can start saying, okay, it's gonna be twenty five bucks a day and get it together, and after six weeks go by, they can nothing, they can double it. If they keep adding it up.
Well, that's uh that sounds good to me. Um, does that, is there any due process problem with that?
Well, you have to, I mean, I think part of why, A, you have the written notice before anything attaches in terms of the daily fine, the written notice should specify, right, the exact amount so they know.
Right, and if the selectmen were to, uh, you know, a month has gone by and nothing's happened, and then they would write another letter with an increase in the farm.
Um, so they they could do it that way, but you could also, you know, they can put the highest amount and always, you know, they can always sort of.
Select. Back down.
Settle or find a compromise, or if the person finally comes to the table and remediates the soil, maybe they don't impose any daily fine.
If. If we are the only ones without such an ordinance, what are the fines for and does?
Didn't we start with the Belmont Ordinance?
I believe we did, yeah.
Some word, I I don't think it had a specific fine listed for a violation of that. It was just that you can't do it then without the, it was pretty much you can't do it.
Because.
Except in very limited areas with exceedingly onerous uh regulation, you know, test test wells, third party monitoring, all all kinds of things.
I think this is probably best use of a tool for deterring people from doing this, so I would argue for the matching the fine to the zoning and not giving wiggle room on it, but maybe giving um maybe extending the notice. So that once they get the notice, they have some time to to remediate before these fines kick in.
Um, yeah, well, I mean, ultimately, it's a select decision, so maybe would it be just fair to say from the board that it it the the planning board suggested a. Daily fine of somewhere between fifty and two seventy five would be appropriate in this select word, when they adopt it, they can they can have a discussion.
I like that, up to two fifty.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Right, so anything in that range, at least in our opinion, would be.
Yeah, at the end of the day, the select for just to make decisions on this anyways, so like whatever we suggest is kind of just a suggestion.
Appropriate.
Right.
But yeah, I mean, I'd be fine with two seventy five, I'd be fine with fifty, I mean, it's.
How we shouldn't.
Mm.
I don't think there's any point in us like stressing ourselves over what the exact right fine amount is, when we don't even get the final word on this.
Alright.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The fine amount's gonna be really mo- is gonna be the remediation that's gonna be expensive, so.
Well, ideally, nobody ever violates this and we don't have to do any of that, because ideally, we don't get dirty dirt.
Yes. Alright, so um I'll make sense, and then that we. Clean up this draft, and I sent a a word version of that, Cal, right, so you think you'd be able to make just the swaps of ordinance to regulations? At a note that the fine amount is in, you know, in the board's discretion, there's sort of a range and um.
And we're gonna.
Add the word thermally treated contaminated soil to, it'll say including, specifically including but not limited to, add but not limited to, and then that one term.
And we're gonna hear from Kelly about that before tonight's hour?
We can um mention her, but I think, you know, the select board will still have to go through a process and public hearings.
No, I meant on the on the um the the nomenclature.
Yeah, we'll flag it when she's in, so if she wants to suggest something different, but at least for now, those are what we got. Alright. Anyone have anything else on this sludge piece for me?
Um, I'm just looking at your notes on that third page.
Yep.
Do we have to add this or is it covered? Uh, if the town conducts the remediation, the person will owe the town for the cost of remediation. Does that need to be written in the? In this?
Good question.
I think what that last paragraph above my notes is. For any violation that requires remediation or abatement, including but not limited to remediation or abatement conducted by the town, the owner or occupant of the property may be responsible for. Or maybe you say will be responsible for all costs as directed in one forty seven, seven and seventeen.
But it kind of already says that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So like that's that's the point, which is if the town goes and does it.
I'm sorry.
And again, that the may be responsible gives the selectmen some new way to spend taxpayer money or.
No, I'm fine. I I just saw this here, and I didn't.
Yeah, no problem.
Catch it previously.
It's 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 been a while. Alright, um. Scott, when you do get it and you you put it on the agenda, feel free to let us know, and I can try to make that meeting too, so I can, you know, help answer any other four questions, but we can flag that for Conservation Commission as well and um.
On that same. Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry. On that same paragraph, the owner or occupant of the property may be responsible. Um, that may, shouldn't that be a shall?
I think it should.
Is reasonable, shall.
Um, so I think that should be a shall, and the other comment there is the occupant.
Well, it's it's whoever I think is discharging, I think is is the intent there, but if you have a a tenant who is dumping their sludge.
Right, so you know. A tenant who does it. Right, and and with or without the permission of the landlord, um, I I'm not sure we have any jurisdiction over occupant. You know, we have, we can go after a a landowner and 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 sue the landlord, but can you really sue the tenant?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's it's a a health ordinance, so it's someone who has done something to endanger the health of of residents and um.
I'll go with that.
Under.
Let's move to the may the shall.
Yeah, under paragraph five, it's no person, so it's not, right, no property, or it's no person shall store, stockpile, spread, release, or otherwise discharge. Because I'd also like to be able to go after someone if they drive up to the back of my property on the other road and dump stuff.
Um, yes.
Yeah. Which I haven't had just some tires, I think, so far.
Did that happen?
Just just once, so this is one off.
Someone dumped some pressure treated woods, wooden, I would.
Well, thank you.
I took it and used it to repair my chicken coop.
Alright, so I think we're good with uh sludge ordinance with those changes, um, so let me know whenever that is, and I can plan to attend that meeting.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, the next one, so wetland seppex, I think I had circulated way back, we hadn't gotten around to it. I know I was very late and I apologize on the data center tiny home piece. I have no preference for order, but if you want to talk data center, sorry, it's it's one single definition, so I'm happy to read it, we can sort of discuss for now, and we can bring it back up at another year after, if that works.
Yeah, I was hoping to um. We had drafted something and, you know, it sort of went away, and and rather than recreate everything, if anyone has the. All the paper that was generated with regard to that issue.
On data center?
Yeah, because we we started it in one place and then wound up somewhere else, and um and the, you know, morphing from here to there. I I that that was problematic, but where we started, it it rather than recreating, it would it would be helpful, I mean, so far as I'm in charge of that, um, it would be helpful to have all that, and I don't.
We'll say, well, we can, uh, we'll have to have a public hearing before we can do anything anyway, so that gives us time to look for it, but at least as a starting point, can I go through that that one definition and see if, anyways, any thoughts, so. Again, I try to keep it simple but broad and and targeted, so it's the structure or premises used to host the hardware. And its parentheses, such as computer servers and telecommunications equipment, and parentheses, required for onsite data storage, cloud data storage, or artificial intelligence computing.
That includes my office. It's too broad, something's a matter of fact, and that was the problem with it, is that it it's it's a home office is within that definition.
Oh, I mean, this this is a definition that it wasn't, I couldn't find New Hampshire towns, but um like Pennsylvania, some other places and what they use, and I don't know that anyone would. I mean, the clear purpose of data center is not someone whose home, they're using, you know, a computer, but I don't know how you quantify the amount of.
Can I see the language? Sorry, I don't have it.
Storage, sure.
Well, I I think maybe this um requires a a decision on or or ideas on what exactly is the harm that we're trying to um. Uh, mitigate, and and I can offer some suggestions, but you know, not comprehensive, I suppose. Uh, you know, energy use, water, um, uh, uh, you know, unsightliness of some big box, um.
Noise.
Noise.
I think this is maybe less of an issue than you think it is, because the purpose of your home office is definitely not any of those things. You're not providing people with like file storage or cloud storage as a service. You're you're providing legal services.
I mean, we can, we can add the word commercial, like used for commercial purposes to host, you know, and and put that, but I think the other piece is that. If you're just looking after it's enacted, at what it would look like, I think if if the town tried to enforce this against you for your home office, like you'd have a real good void for vagueness, that's not the intent of the article argument. If someone came in and proposed a four acre data center to do uh cloud computing or AI computing, I think they would not have a this is void for vagueness argument, because it's clearly the type of commercial. Uh, you know, four acres worth of hardware to do.
Excuse me, Brandon, I I agree with you, but we are not only.
Yeah.
We are convincing our residents who are reading this for the first time, and uh they need to be able to understand.
Right.
And they're not all lawyers who get void for vagueness.
And I would say, I know that. Some folks in the techs tech industry, like my husband, who their home office is not a typical home office, it is extraordinary, because he is hacking telecom equipment, he is hacking. Uh, he is using large uh cloud data storage and has significant amounts of servers and hardware, and that would absolutely outlaw his office, and it's not a standard office, so.
Alright. So. Well, we say, or I think you know this industry much better than me. Are you willing to see if you can come up with a definition or look around and see if you can have one that. I think the the goal is those, you know, multi acre large facilities that eat up, you know, tons of water and cooling and electricity.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and I think Josh is onto something in terms of resource consumption, because that is the big reason why we don't want that here. I mean, unsightliness and noise, sure, but mostly it's drying up towns where they're putting these, so it's it's something about quantifying the resource consumption that will be a big difference later.
But. Yeah, and.
Boy, that's hard to, uh, that's hard to monitor and regulate, isn't it?
It it makes it hard on the enforcement, but I think there's probably a way that without putting a specific, like if you use this many kilowatts or whatever, there's probably a way to make it a little bit more obvious that it's aimed at these.
When we did, when we started this two years ago, maybe we were um on the cutting edge, but there are towns now all over the place that had.
Adopting ordinance.
We got residents regulating this, so, you know, there's not a clean slate, so when you're looking around, Megan, you, you know, you'll be able to find something.
And um, Cal, do you mind just adding, to the extent that you know we're able to find whatever was. Uh, when this was previously discussed, if there was another.
I wasn't able to find anything beyond like a couple of little notes that there was.
Okay, because I didn't see anything, at least in my mail.
Definishing my ordinance, but I also, I I don't know, I saw it before, and I think Michelle wasn't able to find anything either.
Right.
I do recall us refining this.
Yeah, I think.
At some point, and we came to a definition that sounded much better.
I thought you did it.
It's deja vu all over again.
Hi.
It wasn't that long ago, yeah.
It wasn't a couple years, a year maybe?
Um, yeah, we were looking in the files from twenty twenty four, because that's been like this time last year, when we were talking about it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that's where we weren't coming up with anything, so.
It's gotta be in the minutes, because this was a conversation, it's not like we workshopped an actual document, we just talked about it, and we're like, okay, yeah, that sounds better, and then I don't think anything.
It it was.
No, you reworkshop the document, you came up with something.
Yeah, maybe an alternative too is have the broad definition and then put a card out, which is this is not intended to include.
Uh, that's a good way to do this.
Home offices or or home businesses that are doing.
Right.
And and define limited use.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
I don't have any of that paper from that.
Would that be uh home businesses as defined in our ordinance?
Yeah, I I'd probably have to go back and and look through, home business might be too broad, but yeah, we can, we can take.
That might be. Well, that limits it to no more than two employees who are not family members.
The thing about these data centers, they employ next to no, no people, actually.
Well, they, they might, I mean, I have a friend who's an electrician who's like full time, they have to go down to the Budweiser plant, they have multiple electricians because they have so much electric issues, and I can't for the life of me figure out what they're doing, but they have to have multiple people, I'd have to imagine they have.
I mean, it's like a.
If their contract is not employees.
Akers of these that there's there's people, but yeah, I I don't know, it's.
It would be a mistake to have any of this resting on some elements of current technologies that are very likely to change faster than we can change the ordinance.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, but but I think there's a, there's probably a good way to. Define sort of the limited expected home use that most people are.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure there's an accepted definition of data center.
Alright.
I'm not sure there is.
I could.
Um, I know somebody who does permitting for data centers, so maybe if you're looking for a definite.
They're gonna give us one that's great with them, right? I'm just kidding, yeah.
Well, they, not in our area, not in our, not in our, they do it up in in Quebec, so they are used to that.
Yeah. Maybe say, give me an example of a definition of a place where you were unable to get one sighted.
I could, I could ask her for that.
Yeah, that would be good.
Right.
And I think Virginia is where this started to be regulated, so.
Well, they're running water, water and electricity.
Bad for me, no doubt.
But uh, yeah, alright.
Alright.
Can we continue that piece? Um, or do you have anything else you wanna add on data centers before we move off that? Or you found one?
And Megan, I'll look at.
I'm appreciative. Data center shall mean any facility, building, structure, or portion thereof designed, used, or intended to be used to house computer system servers, networking equipment, or data storage, equipment, and associated infrastructure, da, 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 um. Then it specifically, kinda like we did with the, um, the last regulation where we're including specifically these server farms, cloud computing, commercial cloud computing facilities, cryptocurrency mining facilities, and any operation in which the primary function of the facility is centralized commercial storage, processing, or transmission of data.
That's a pretty good place to start.
That sounds like a definition of a data center, data center.
Yeah.
It's written by a data center.
Yes, it was written by a data center. So we can start there.
Yeah, okay.
I'll bring from the next.
Um, tiny homes, we don't have to dwell on it now, cause I, I'd sent a little bit more, but one of the things I wanted to flag when you do have a chance all to look at the, or to say, when I started looking at these, there's sort of the initial piece of how to define a tiny home, which isn't too hard, but then the piece that some towns have done some other things that shows there's a potential issue, it's trying to make it clear that we're not, the intent of adding tiny homes or expanding their use in certain places is not intended to allow new manufactured housing or housing parks in places that the town didn't intend them. So I think there's, you know, the one zone where they're supposed to be in town, but you don't wanna accidentally define tiny home in a way that you can now put a manufactured housing home everywhere, cause we, we think, or at least I think tiny home is these really cute, well-designed functional spaces that are, you know, sub eight hundred feet, sometimes, you know, lofts and sometimes kind of wheels, but if you don't think it through, you can accidentally run into that, so one of the things I, um, sent over and, and you only would have just gotten it either today or yesterday, is Barrington actually had sort of a selectmen side ordinance for co-enforcement that tried to tee out the difference between if you're a tiny home, what we mean is not this, and so there's a, a provision in the state building code that deals with tiny home standards. But that provision is a little bit too broad, so they made sure to make it clear that if, if your home is built to, you know, modular or sorry, manufactured housing standards, it's not supposed to be included. So I mean, it's gonna take a little bit more thought.
Yeah, and, and I think there's actually three things going on, you know, the cute little tiny, tiny helmets in your head. On the one hand, and then there's, um, you know, trailers on wheels, long thin thing, right? And then third, there's, I, I, I think what the industry calls manufactured homes, which are, uh, you know, you don't, it's not a stick-built home onsite, but it's a stick-built home done in a, in a, in a, in a factory somewhere, and it's dragged in on, you know, three different trucks and then stuck, you know, pinned together. And it's a real house when it's all put together, but it manufactured elsewhere. And, and, um, those, those, you don't wanna, um, limit that either, cause that's how people build houses sometimes. And, and I, I think there's a little bit of a, um, prejudice, you know, it's like if it's, if it's eight feet wide and fifty feet long, well, that's, that's a trailer. But if it's, uh, you know, um, twenty feet this way and fourteen feet this way, you know, and that's, and, and, and it's cute and it's got eaves, you know, that's not a trailer, and how, how do you distinguish between those things and, and why do you distinguish?
Right, and so we have to be conscious on that, what I'll flag is, we do have a definition of manufactured housing. And I believe when I looked at this last time, it incorporates the state definition, but then, um, the end of our current ordinance is manufactured housing is defined, shall not include pre-site-built housing as defined in, and it's like it's another statute, cause statewide, they wanted to make sure there was a distinction between those two.
Are manufactured and prefabricated different, cause what you were describing sounds like prefabricated housing where you will put in different, and then manufactured is that we have a.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, so I think that's.
Just. That's the distinction that Brandon is talking about.
We have an expert to weigh in.
Right, so there's.
Do you have?
So maybe deja vu, because strangely, last time I was in, I think we were having the same discussion. So manufactured housing is what we used to call mobile homes. Pre-site-built housing is modular.
Right.
They're regulated by state, modular is still state fire marshal, right?
To the statute. That is correct.
Regulated, and it, the, the standards aren't the same as, as the state building code.
I think the key part is the chassis on manufactured housing, and so it can end up on a permanent foundation, but it's still like it.
And I did the sole.
But, but, but regulated by complete, who regulates manufactured housing?
Say E and C.
I, yeah, I think so.
Might be right, I, I honestly don't remember off the top of my head.
But it's protected separately, I think by state, no, by federal law.
If I remember, the state adopts the federal and then.
Standard.
Yeah, the federal.
Yeah, but, but mo- but modular is no different than the guy
Regular house.
brings framers out and that's your house on the foundation, it's, it's just a regulated, instead of your building inspector regulating it.
Right. Right.
It's just a.
It's the state fire marshal.
Yeah. And they inspect the places where they're built.
I have a question, why is it, uh, tiny house an ADU?
So I think the, the way I kinda thought about it is when we have a definition, we can say something to the effect of, and if we like, is, a tiny home can be used as the primary dwelling, which currently our zoning ordinance wouldn't allow, cause we have a, I think, a minimum, or as an ADU. So we, I think that would be the goal, is to say, you know, once we've defined it correctly, you can use it as your ADU, or if we want, or if the voters want, maybe they can do it as their primary dwelling.
So I have a question as well, to your concern about we don't wanna open this up to you know, manufactured housing parks, isn't that a quantity issue, not a quality of what the house is?
So. What I was trying to get is, so the, the way, at least I understand that the state law is no town can prohibit manufactured housing in all zones, in all circumstances, meaning you have to allow it in at least one way. And we allow manufactured housing only in home parks. When rural residential, but we do not allow it as sort of your principal dwelling, and don't allow it as uh, even as a park in the agricultural, commercial, industrial, and.
Why?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, the towns that, I mean, there's a, a long history, I guess, and I'm maybe not the best person to speak with it, and probably Rochester could give you a long sad story. But, um, what happens is those residents didn't like that certain areas within their town ended up with a bunch of parks. And towns started prohibiting them entirely, and the state said you can't do that because they're affordable housing. So like find a way, and sort of the compromise that I think most towns landed on is we'll allow these parks in particular areas in our town, which allows them to keep them out of zones where we want the character of the other zone to be different, I think that's the goal, but.
Okay, okay, cause I'm just, to me, it's sounding, again, when you say park, I'm thinking about how many are allowed in a place. Versus just if somebody buys a piece of land and what they can afford to put as their single home on that piece of land is a manufactured home, we prohibit that if it's not in the right place?
That's the way the ordinance is currently written, yeah.
That's extremely classic.
Yeah, that's exactly right, and I think it was intended that way. And, and then you go to places, I mean, even in
And manufactured housing parks.
There's a few, um, dead-end roads in Loudon where, um, you know, they've become dilapidated, and, and they started out a little bit dilapidated. And you see that, uh, in Jordan, maybe, um, some of the towns up north, and, and I think it's, 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 um, classes by.
Well, it's economic, uh, the, uh, unincorporated townships that don't have zoning and regulation is where, uh, where you see a lot of people who can't afford other, uh, housing, living in
Camps.
Camps and dilapidated, uh, old campers, the old, uh, old
Travelers.
house trailers, quote, manufactured housing.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the flip side is you've got the parts of the master plan that talk about aesthetic and this is a rural farming community, and this is our particular style, and some of the comments we had even on the cluster subdivision about what housing looks like in Canterbury, so. I'm not saying it has to be one way or the other, I'm just, that's some of the background, but, um, you know.
We have a mix in Canterbury, uh, yeah, but more, less so now than we used to have.
There was some on Misery Road up where I live that, don't shake a road.
Did they start before or after they named it Misery Road?
I was wondering.
If I lived on Misery Road, I'd be petitioning to change the name of the road.
Alright, so, anyway, wanted to flag all those issues, I think a lot more probably needs to go into that one and figuring out a balance, and whether maybe the answer is a, a simpler definition, as you can all have them as ADUs, and then you don't have to open up a giant can of worms, but that is a can of worms, and a public hearing on any substantive change to manufactured housing would be big.
The problem is, is very, very little that you can do to separate a tiny home from
From a.
a trailer
Yeah.
that does not come down to if you not trailer people, you can have it.
Yes, I mean, take a look at, at what Barrington did, and I need to reread it a couple more times, but it seemed like they were defining it based on who's like whether you're going to a co-inspector or you're going through this, and so they, they seem to have a way to try to distinguish them, I don't know if that's the right approach, but it, it's, it was something worth considering.
What if someone wanted to build their tiny home to look like true?
Yeah.
I'm not before like that, it's not.
Yeah, so, so right now, I think that's also why there's the, is it the, is eight hundred square feet our minimum for?
Primary residence.
Primary residence?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, but I think that's, that's why, part of the reason why there's a, a minimum.
We have a minimum of eight hundred square feet.
I think so, but I have to find it.
Disturbing.
There, I'll look at it another time. Alright. Next was wetland setbacks, I was kind of hoping Kelly said she was gonna try to show up by eight, so we'll see if, if she makes it. This, uh, what was, so Michelle had recirculated the one that I'd sort of pulled together just as an early starting point, and I flagged sort of a whole bunch of different provisions in our zone zoning work, like current provisions that are worth keeping in mind.
I'm sorry, that are worth, what?
So I flagged a bunch of existing definitions in our ordinance that are sort of relevant to keep in mind, but like big picture, there is a whole spectrum of how towns establish setbacks, and there are sort of simple ones that you cannot put a structure within, and there's this distance from any wetland. To complex ones that say, within a wetland setback, here's what you are allowed to do on more property, that are sort of more intrusive, and you can imagine that you get more of those in lake towns, you see, start going north, and when you get out to the seacoast in places like Rye. And simpler ones, you tend to have a lot of the, the places around here, like Trichester and, and those places.
However it's defined, it's going to be a political issue. I, I think, like, big, because people have wetlands, there's wetlands everywhere in Canterbury, and you know, someone's gonna say seventy-five feet's not enough of a setback, and someone's gonna say twenty-five feet is too much. And, um, this is one of those issues where we have to be just careful about how we.
Right, and, and that's where, sort of my, my starting point, or the one that I had circulated, um, oh, actually I had, there's a whole thing about impervious and impervious and what you can do in zoning, some places you can't even put a particular type of patio in the setback, because it's impervious, but they'll make, you know, pervious favors, that kind of stuff. All of that is, is that there is a, a whole menu of options, it's sort of complicated in that sense. A starting point of a simpler setback that just prohibits structure, that's maybe smaller is maybe a good way to start, if it's a you know, and you'll get a sense from the voters on a, a simpler one. You know, if it's twenty-five, fifty feet, it's just dwelling units, maybe, and not even structures. That's your starting point, and you can sort of gauge the town's appetite for more. But ultimately, what this comes down to is, yeah, telling other people what they can and can't do around wetlands.
Uh, an example in Vermont, where protection is no new construction within a hundred and fifty feet of the shoreline.
Do you know if that's statewide, or?
Yes.
Okay, cause, so in New Hampshire, and part of the reason why towns have to do this is we have, I think it's four eighty-two A, but it's the, the wetland ordinance, but it is just within actual wetlands is what the state regulates, and then there was a whole bunch of litigation, is can towns regulate outside, and the answer is yes, so towns can regulate the setbacks, the state regulates what's in the wetlands. Um, so we can't do anything in the wetland, we're preempted, but we're, we're
Less restrictive.
We're free to add restrictions in the setbacks.
I saw a letter we received from a resident
Pardon me?
requesting to be seen today.
Yes, so, and I, I
Is that person here?
Believe you're here too, so, um, if you is now a good time, do you wanna speak to your letter or anything, you know else you had?
No, no, it was a normal discussion, I think.
Yeah.
Okay. It's, I think it's very productive, actually. If you could add, but, uh, I'll say a few words, I I think all of you received my letter, my name is John.
Oh, are you on, on, on the ground, uh, Rocky Pond, is that the letter, okay.
Do you mind just, yeah, state in your address, so we have it on the, in the minutes.
Sure, uh, it's twenty-nine Harmony Lane.
Alright.
Uh, here in Canterbury, on the beautiful shores of Rocky Pond. Uh, I've been a seasonal resident here with my wife, it'll be thirteen years, uh, come October first. And, uh, you know, I, this issue, and it's, it's detailed in my letter that I sent, I'm not gonna go over too much, but, uh, last year I I wanted to start something about, uh, propose wetlands buffer setback, and I reached out to the Conservation Commission, cause I thought that would be the appropriate place to start. Uh, for a variety of reasons, it never happened last year. Uh, so this year I was gonna make it a priority to, uh, make sure I sat before the Conservation Commission, talk about this, hear their feedback. While that was coming about, I noticed that in minutes for the planning board session, that the a resident, not me, someone else, had contacted the land use administrator, asking about whether or not there was a wetlands uh, buffer setback here in the town. So encouraged by all this, I then, uh, redoubled my efforts, and I did have a meeting with the Conservation Commission back in July, and we had a, I thought a very, um, good conversation, it was back and forth, uh, talking about this issue. At the conclusion of that meeting, um, the commission voted that they would have Kelly Short reach out to Chairman here, Mr. O'Donnell. And that they would be I don't wanna put words into, uh, Ms. Short's mouth, but they would be, uh, supportive of such an idea now. There was some concerns mentioned about a wetlands buffer. There was, uh, some indication, one of the board members, uh, well, they were against it because they felt that the current RSAs that are in place are fine, that they would cover a wetland situation, wetlands buffer. My response is simply, and I think you've noted, Mr. Chairman, is that, um, back in two thousand and seven, there was a survey done of the towns here in New Hampshire, and nearly half of them had some form of a wetlands buffer ordinance in place, and that was in two thousand and seven. And if you're gonna say, well, well, that was almost twenty years ago, maybe things have changed. Well, this spring, in the town of Moltenborough, they had it up on their, uh, for, uh, consideration of Warner Article for their annual meeting. Moltenborough apparently had, um, a buffer that applied only in, in some of their districts, zoning districts. The proposal was to extend that to all the districts. And they had a vote and it passed, and that's this past, um, cycle back in March. And in Moltenborough, their buffer is twenty-five feet. And it's, from what I can see, it was more of the simpler version of let everything remain the way it is, and not get into all the, the different, uh, things of what you can do or can't do, it was much more simple. Uh, another concern raised by, uh, a member of the commission, the Conservation Commission, was again, this issue of coming around, uh, about enforcement. Well, how are we gonna go about enforcing it, and, you know, he pointed out that And you know, he pointed out that Moltenborough, well, they, you know, there's a lot of money in Moltenborough and they can have a staff to go around and do whatever they're gonna do. Uh, I think it's a straw man, really enforcement issue. That's like saying, well, why do we have speed lines, right? We don't have a, a police officer on every vehicle in town, right? So yes, enforcement is always a problem when it comes to zoning. But we can't just base our decisions upon whether or not we have adequate enforcement. Because the answer then is you're never gonna pass for a new ordinance, because there's always more that can be done on the enforcement end of it.
Yeah, I mean, I think the way that comes up the most for planning board is it would have to be shown on our site plan reviews and you know, we account for it in subdivisions, those kind of things to make sure there's a building lot. So I think we at least are much less concerned on the enforcement piece. It's sort of as a matter of course, the site plans that we approve would have to show it and they'd have to have whatever's, you know, prohibited outside of the, the setback.
And you go around and you see routine violations of the Shoreland Protection Act, which is more well-known, more obvious, you know, and, and we're regulating something that's, we're proposing regulating something that's, you know, more common and more hidden.
Well, I don't know what the violence is doing. I think there are a lot of non-conform, lawful, non-conforming uses on all of our coastlines and lakes.
Yeah.
And so even in, in Moltenborough, I'm sure that there are a ton of residences that are within that twenty-five setback that are now lawful, non-conforming uses.
You know, and, and, and another issue that was brought up and I think Mr. Gordon raised it a few minutes ago, about the political nature of this. There's still some sense, I would say, from some folks that apparently there, this had been tried at a town meeting some time ago. And I asked the question, well, you know, I've been around about thirteen years. I, I don't remember recall this being on, uh, at a March meeting or on the ballot. So I asked the question, when did this vote occur? The best anyone could say was, was about maybe nineteen ninety-eight, nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand. Apparently the defeat still resonates with some folks.
It was only yesterday.
Lumber of this.
Yes. But you know, if you look at it, that's a generation ago, alright? I think this generation of Canterbury residents have, should be given this opportunity to have a say in this now. And they shouldn't be bound by what happened maybe twenty-five years ago in the vote. They should have a say. And I am passionate about this issue, strangely, I would say I came to it. Just because I come from New York. And in New York, the land is beautiful in New York, the topography, things like that. But the environmental problems in New York are staggering. And I've witnessed them firsthand and they continue to this very day in New York. I don't wanna see what has happened in New York happen here. Yes, there are lots of wetlands here. All the more reason it's a valuable resource. Because as, as someone who lives in New York, you lose that natural resource, it's gone for good. And I don't wanna see that happen to this town. So that's why I'm appearing before this board. And I want to thank you for allowing me to speak. And the final point is, I'm really intent on getting this matter put to the vote. And I'm willing to work with each and every member. As far as I'm concerned, my modest proposal is twenty feet and keep it simple. And I think if you do that, you have a greater likelihood of overcoming the, the political pushback. Who is against twenty feet for wetlands? Okay? I mean, I think it's simple. There may be pushback, but I'll be happy to talk to anyone who thinks that twenty feet's too much.
Same, sorry, question?
Yeah.
Same for a, just walk the place with marsh grass on it as for open water? Pardon me? Same distance, twenty feet from a
From a designated wetlands?
Wetland, no difference between that and, and open water, like a pond, pond shore.
Well, that is, I think you have the Shoreland Protection, right? The state regulation. So I'm not sure I, I understand.
So we have to, great, and then that'll be one of the pieces that comes up is how do you find wetland? But what you will see in some towns that have these and when you end up getting like a subdivision, you know, Jim's coming for subdivision, he delineates the wetlands. You may very well have the wetland scientist delineate a number of poorly draining soils that do not have standing water and things that you wouldn't expect to see and create a whole bunch of these little buffers all over.
Wasn't that true?
Just in time, yeah.
The definition is actually, if I remember, it refers to vegetation, plants, what kind of plants for that, you know?
Well, we can, I, I would say in, in, in setting any wetland setback, we should be looking at whatever our definition is and considering whether we are changing it. Something that some of those towns do that are more lake towns is they will have certain particular wetlands, like lakes and streams, like major streams designated as like a designated wetland and then other wetlands. And there's a, a different scale of setback and that kind of thing. And that's
So, so
Again, so that like the level of complexity can tell.
Do they define wetlands differently than the state statute? Or do they designate particular spots based on, I, I don't know, geological, geographical, whatever?
Yeah, I think some will say, like Cole's Pond, Dave's Pond, this stream, this stream are designated prime wetland or something.
Okay. Right.
And here's the setback you need. And then they'll have a different broader definition of wetland and say for other wetland, here's your
And do they do, and does the definition of wetland in that case, is it different or more, more restrictive than the state definition?
I think they're all a little different.
They're all, or do they, really, are they different than the state? Because that seems like a, um
Do you mind if I, I turn, there's like a couple hands over there and maybe they could help me in.
I have a question actually for you. Can you, sorry. There was someone with a hand behind you.
Yes, both Kelly and Jim had their hand up. So after you all, I'll go to them.
Um, can you share just a couple of brief examples of the consequences you've seen in New York from not having wetland setbacks?
Oh, we, uh, just this summer, I mean, you, in terms of the areas around, for example, lakes. There's a couple of lakes in particular in the western New York area that are right now, it's so bad, the lakes. And I'm saying it's, the one lake in particular is probably even bigger than Winnebago. They actually have a machine that goes out and mows the lake because of all the mill foil and all this other stuff. And there's, and there's runoff into the lakes from farming activity as well as all their human activity. And there's no buffering of the lake so that these, let's say nutrients, phosphorus or whatever, they don't, it's not, they don't dissolve properly. Instead they get into the lake and before you know it, you have all sorts of problems, including the cyanobacteria and all this other stuff. And that's an ongoing problem. And that's just two lakes in the county south of me. And it's this past summer. And that our state DEC, they just shake their head and, you know, they put out a few press releases. And it happens year after year after year. And it's getting worse and worse to such a degree that the homeowners on the lake are really upset. And they don't know what they're gonna do now.
Thank you. I'm gonna turn, try to get some more voice, but Jim, you have
Yeah, my recollection, and I had to enforce the Shoreline Protection Act for a while, is that it's limited to a certain size. And I can't remember if it's great ponds or if it's a different designation. But like, it would, it would not regulate the pond in, in Greg's backyard. With respect to how you know if something's a wetland or not, it's largely evident by the plants that grow there. But the wetland scientists, for example, that delineate for a subdivision or whatever, it's all by soil.
Right. They do test pits and they'll pick areas and they may look for, you know, vegetation to look to where they're gonna, to dig a test pit.
Kelly, am I right?
Uh, yeah, I would agree with that. And all I was gonna mention was that the state has a definition for prime wetlands and I don't have it in the top of my head. But they are large and they're, so the, the state defines what prime wetland is.
Is prime wetland different than a wetland?
Yes. It's a, it's a better, bigger, more special wetland.
A wetlandier wetland, as it were.
Yes, and
So maybe we should go find, like you were suggesting, you know, another town where it's passed and, and it seems to be working and not try to recreate.
So yeah, and I, you'll see when you get the email, this was from, or recirculating it. I think I gave some examples of how, was it Belmont, Meredith and Center Harbor defined wetlands and what they allowed within them. And I had attached a couple, but one of the things that Kelly and I briefly spoke about is whether it would help to have a subcommittee with a couple of members of the Conservation Commission and a couple of members of the planning board so they can really sort of dig into it and compare them and just come back with a proposal that at least a couple of the conservation members and planning board members could support.
I, I might caution against a, some unique or, or newfangled definition of wetlands and try to stick with what the, the surveyors and the, and the wetland scientists are already dealing with on a day-to-day basis. Not trying to find something new.
Agree.
Is this something that you're trying to get past this year?
I don't know that, I have a, oh, we do have forty-eight-two on, in here. I think there is a possibility we could get something on if there was support for it. But I think the starting point should be potentially a subcommittee, like really just getting into it and seeing what can we come with in the proposal? And then the planning board is an opportunity to say, I think we need more time, whatever it is, or we're good to at least put it on the ballot. And so
We should be able to do that by the, by
I, I think a simple version and, and to what we're talking about is it wouldn't be hard to at least have a draft. If there's agreement and they look at people that have twenty-five feet, just prohibiting dwellings or just prohibiting dwellings and structures or something simple like that as a starting point is not a large drafting obligation. It's just, you know, haggling, I guess.
If you have this in front of you, the Meredith zoning ordinance number five wetland, there's a big carve-out. Individually less than three thousand square feet in size are not contiguous to water stream or like a pond. These wetlands are exempt from the provisions of this ordinance, provided that the limits and area of the wetland have been field determined and delineated. But that seems like a pretty big carve-out.
So it exempts farm, farm ponds or, or fire pond, right?
Well, three thousand.
I'm not sure. So what I'll tell you is the existing wetlands definition, and I attached it in that email from our existing ordinance, is the state definition from, I just pulled it up to confirm, but four eighty-two A.
The, this thing?
Two. Yeah, the top, the top part where I say, where is it? Applicable Canterbury zoning ordinance definitions, those are all the existing definitions that we have. That was just for reference so that you don't have to jump around. But that definition of wetlands is currently in our ordinance and it is the state definition of wetlands.
That's the same as the state definition.
I don't think we're particularly questioning our definition of wetlands so much as what we should have a setback. Am I wrong?
Well, and, and that's the point is once, once people get into it, they might have some of those comments, which is do we wanna have just a setback from larger wetlands or, you know, standing or some of the, you know, you can choose to separate between particular wetlands and
I just have a question about, Kelly might know this actually, is there a hydrology map of the town that states the amount of wetlands the town can system?
So we have, through the Central New Hampshire Regional Planning Commission, we have access to maps that show soil type and wetlands. That's based on data, large sets of data that are, that generally have to be ground-truthed to be fully trusted.
Right.
So you can take that as like a starting point. But I think, I think we've, we've looked into doing prime wetlands designation and I believe that the state would require us to, to actually go out and do tests, like identify the plants that are on the properties and, in, in question and confirm that it's saturated a certain number of tons of the year. I don't think you can rely solely on the maps. I think they're a good, they point you in the right direction.
Cause I guess my only question that would spur off of this would be, what percentage of the town would be considered wetlands or affected by this? How would that affect the zoning areas for potential development, housing, et cetera, in a crunch like this? If we find out sixty percent of our town is designated wetlands or some form of wetlands, what does that do to a landowner who wants to sort of buy it or develop or build? I mean, that would be, I guess, the ultimate opposite side of this. And I understand that the good intention of having setbacks, but this town's never had one. And it's never, in my opinion, adversely affected it. So I would just be curious to see what it would do to the build out, the plan for tomorrow, those sort of things.
Yeah, and, and so it's an interesting question. And there are some towns that are, it's, it's more irregular. And so you end up with a lot more variance requests because there's like a little ten-square-foot area that has been identified as poorly drained soil. And someone has to go to get a variance to put their structure there and explain on the scheme of things. It's not that big of a deal.
I think that's the key is not, is the size, is the size, is the trigger size.
Well, and, you know, that's, I think, at least my understanding in Canterbury, when I've gone on all the roads, it's the terrain alternates very rapidly everywhere. And I have lots and lots of wetland scattered among not wetland on my property.
I feel like my roadblock was as a wetland, it was a waste of money.
There's currently a lot of citizen science and documentation on the loss of rental pools and the impact that that's had on the ecology of the woods and stuff. So I mean, the frogs are gone, the newts, the salamanders are gone. Once that house goes up, those rental pond, those rental pools aren't hanging around. I mean, they can't, they can't populate anymore. So, and once they're gone, they're gone.
So I have a question about, so we're talking about how wetlands are defined and how far setbacks should be. I'm curious, I'm looking at some of the examples you gave, but what can and can't be built within the
The whole bonus conversation.
It's, yeah. Because I would be curious, if we're trying to craft something that's more palatable to people, you know, building a home right next to a wetland is gonna be different than say, like what we have. It's dilapidated now, but it was built by John and, way back then. But it's a dilapidated, like dock that allows us to walk across the wetland to get into Craneak rather than having to like get in the canoe and go all the way around into Craneak. So would, is, that's not environmentally disruptive. So where, where we draw those lines on, it might be if we allow some of those things I see on the Center Harbor example, like, you know, shade awnings or a, a tent or, you know, or a, something that holds your canoe right there, whatever. Or would those be allowable? And that might be more palatable to folks in keeping this as a houses, roads, those sorts of things.
Exactly. And so I, I think that's, that's part of the discussion. And, and is there any interest in that, in finding a couple of planning board members, sending them to meet as a subcommittee with some of the Conservation Commission members and they can maybe get into that more, come back with a proposal and then, you know, explain here's because totally, there's, there's a whole range of options for what you can prohibit or not prohibit, or I should say, attempt to or propose to. A, a whole range of options for size of setbacks and for, you know, whether or not you want a more restrictively defined wetlands. Whether or not you wanna separate larger wetlands from smaller wetlands and work with your setbacks. So there, there are an awful lot of options. It's a farming town. You're also gonna run into issues if you're getting into uses as opposed to structures and even structures. You know, there are a lot of hayfields that have been used for a hundred years that qualify as wetland.
I wanna put in a plug, Calvin, to ask Kelly about maps. Ten years ago, maybe, you and your commission developed a whole bunch of maps that, I don't know if you're all familiar with, but they were amazing. On a, on like a bunch of different
They're all available online.
Yeah.
And so the, the, like I said, the Regional Planning Commission did the maps. And they're always based on the data that's publicly available. So it might be federal data, it might be state data, it's rarely our own data. So I just, I know that the, I, I have heard people who were much better informed about this than me say, that's a good, then you can look at the soils map and they have it going out in pit tests. and they haven't gone out and pit tested every, you know, inch of soil. So they've made some estimations about what kind of soil is in a place based on its geology and what's growing there and all that sort of, you know, science information that can go into it. So we, yes, we can use the wetlands map and we can use the soil map to try and identify where we have wetlands. But I think ultimately, the only way to absolutely know if something is a wetland is to have somebody who can identify the plants that are growing there go and identify, because what they're looking for is if, if the, if the location is wet enough to support the plants that are considered wetland habitat plants and a certain, and the soil is wet a certain amount of time of the year, then it's going to qualify as a wetland. But if, there could be things on the map that show up as wetland, but, you know, water moves. The, in the climate has changed, things that were wetlands 10 years ago or 100 years ago or whenever that map data was created may not still be.
Right, and I think a lot of towns relied on like US geological surveys and they're only done once a decade and those are meant to be super big picture, what are the resources in the United States, not what does each lot have. And so the towns that rely on them too much end up with kind of fights frankly, where a person will get an actual wetland scientist, dig a bunch of test pits and sometimes there are disbelieving members because they think, well, there's this big map, but.
So, which is why this, like Meredith has defined areas, identified.
Yeah, but I think, I think their defined areas are like super obvious, like great ponds and other, other streams and then they have the broader definition and when someone comes in for site plan or, you know, they, they go request a building permit and the building inspector sees something obvious, they may ask, you know, we need to have a wetland scientist confirm where stuff is on your property. That's sort of how this all gets triggered, but you would end up with, in, for our hearings at least, someone coming in with a stamped map that we can rely on from someone who is, you know, a professional who is obligated to accurately report stuff or they'll lose their license with the state, that kind of thing.
Well, the Meredith, and on this brief read, the Meredith ordinance exempts a lot.
Meredith is a little while, like they're, they're organized and they're great and then people come in, but at the same time, it's no matter what you want to do, they want a fully stamped plan and this whole checklist and it's a lot of money to get in the door, to see their playboard is on board. And they can do that because, you know, they've got a lot more residents to volunteer and a lot more time and a lot more money. All right.
To your question about a subcommittee, I'm interested, a lot of it would just, for me, depend on schedule and timing and frequency of meeting and that sort of thing, so.
So Kelly, can I go to you briefly? And I think what you'd said in your last email is the goal, I think initially would be short turnaround, not turn it into a belabored, long process going through everything, but like to try to meet somewhat frequently upfront for a shorter duration.
Yep, and just focus on one topic at a time, with just like maybe three of the, three members from each board. Because, you know, it gets technical and it gets complicated and I think a smaller group could discuss and chew through some of the questions more quickly and then either revise, you know, what you've already drafted or come back with suggestions about how it could be revised. And then have the full Planning Board, the full Conservation Commission give their input on the, on that draft. You know, having, if, if, if six of us come and join you, it's going to be a lot of people trying to talk about this.
Yes, and, and something, you know, maybe worth in addition to the text is some sort of brief statement that our ports can work towards that could be published and sent to voters, which is here's sort of the realm of options that are out there, here's why this proposal fits into this and, you know, let them know ahead of time because it is, it's a valid only question if it's a proposed zoning ordinance.
Right.
Some effort will need to be made to
Yeah.
educate people beyond just the public hearings that are not well-attended.
Definitely. I wanted to say related to that, that I think because it, it will be perceived by some people as a limitation of their right to use their land, how they want to use their land. If we want to go forward with this, we have to take the approach that, you know, lots of information, lots, a few sessions to let people come in and ask questions and vent frustration if that's what they have. Maybe even outside, I know we'd have to have proper public hearings, but even before that, just like information sessions. What is a setback? Why is it good, why are we considering doing it? What do we gain from it? What are the risks of losing, what are the, what do some people see as the downside of, of a wetland setback? So that people in the community who might be concerned have it feel, at least feel like they have a chance to be heard. And then we would have a chance to get, inform a lot of people so that, because it is only a valid question, I think it's, it runs that risk of like, well, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, it's been okay so far, let's just leave it the way it is. Might be the default position of a lot of people.
I'm happy to lend my former political comms mind to this.
All right.
I normally am waiting to be on that committee.
I said initially, it was, I'm just also conscious of this.
I'm, I'm willing to do it as well. Is there maybe a third person who is interested in hitting, and we don't have to have necessarily three people, I think you could be fine with two because it's still going to come back.
I suggest smaller number is going to at least good.
All right.
Process go a lot faster.
Okay, two is I think the, the proposal from our board.
All right. And who else besides Megan?
I think I will do it as well, yeah.
Great.
So, and.
So you, you want to just follow up with me and let me know like best availability from you guys and I'll try and do the same with my team and then figure out when we might actually get together?
Can do.
Okay.
When does the Conservation Commission typically meet?
On the second Thursday of the month, so we meet this Thursday.
What time?
Seventeen.
But this would be outside of their regular meetings, too. So we can find anything that, that works.
Right, whenever, whatever time we go.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank all members of the board for considering this. I'm, I'm very pleased by our discussion and again, if there's anything I can do to help, I'll be happy to do it.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I want to add one thing. A good selling, a selling point for this proposal is Canterbury's dependence on private wealth.
Oh, yeah.
Protecting, protecting our groundwater is really a critical thing for this.
Very good point. Yeah, there was in the news the other day about people coming public streams, what do you call, spring where the water flows out of the ground? And, and getting in Giardia.
It's up from Bethlehem.
Bethlehem, that's right, Bethlehem.
Those people drink the raw water in Canterbury?
Well.
Rich, that's an embarrassing name, Tom.
It's my sister.
Thanks, thanks for helping out there, Jim. Take care. All right. Solid Waste Management, so I have skimmed the areas report, I have not, I think I need to reread it certainly. Scott, is that something maybe you could just introduce at a high level for the board, what that report went through?
Thank you. Sure, so, we actually received it yesterday as well and it contains, if I remember, seven options. So I think that's, that's a very high level. Some of the options include, they are now manufacturing single-phase compactors. If you remember, one of the things that we were looking at was the expense of running three-phase to that site, which if I remember was $200,000, some odd thousand dollars. If we go with a single-phase compactor, that will no longer be necessary, so that will save us a.
Is there some capacity issues with that?
No, actually. So it, and I don't pretend to understand electricity, but my understanding is, no. That it's a, the one that they, if I remember, called out in the report is like a four-cubic yard compactor, so.
Presumably they don't cost $200,000 more than the three-phase ones.
Definitely not. And then we would contract to transport the cubes, if you will, whatever you want to call them, over to a elevator. So that would save us from having to buy another truck.
And, all right, one of the big takeaways was construction could happen on certain parts of the lot, as long, there are areas where you don't want to be doing anything that would disturb the ground, but there are areas where like the existing place where they could rebuild the overhang and put a pad there that that wouldn't cause a environmental hazard.
Correct.
I don't know the right words.
But there is a lot of material that we need to absorb, so.
Do you have any initial thoughts? You know, welcome to share as well. I don't know if you've had time to digest the report yet either.
I'm in the process of digesting. I think the options for a new transfer station are very doable in the lens of this report because of the 30% contingencies that were added. I thought it was interesting that Wind Waste and Casella didn't even want to put a bid in.
Yep.
For any, kind of expected that, but it was very similar to the numbers that we had gotten two years ago. Yeah, I mean, there's a lot, there's, there's still a lot to digest. It was a very, I mean, just a summary was six pages, seven pages, and then you've got all the details, the minutia behind it that that breaks everything down. Yeah, I, like I said, like Scott said, I mean, it just came out last night, so it, it, there's definitely some processing time.
Yeah, I only saw it this afternoon, I didn't get a chance to read it.
And if I'm, if I'm looking at what the town has to do, which is different than what we have to do, the Select Board ultimately will have to come up with a proposal and a warrant article and the voters will get to decide big picture what they want to do. In terms of the solid waste management chapter, there's probably a way that we can revise it to reference this, which is there are, you know, ways of using the existing site and there is always an available option of looking at another site which would cost more money and, you know, the town needs to be continuing to evaluate the
Yeah.
ongoing impact on the current site and, you know.
And I think, you know, one of the things that, that has perhaps held us back before is the difficulty of getting three-phase. And I couldn't find it to, at this point, a particular part of town, which it no longer does, when you build a single phase.
So say if, if the good news there is the existing site is, you know, it wasn't a recommendation of you need to shut this down and get out of there. There is, there is a way to use it so that there are more options in the sense of the solid waste management chapter, which is.
But if, you know, if as Rich says, we look at different sites, that widens our, our search area considerably, so not, you know. But it's always going to be problematic because somebody's going to hate it. Correct. You're, you're absolutely right. NIMBY is a thing. Well, it's a dump.
But the.
Former dump.
Transfer station, right, former dump. Any other one?
Yeah. But the, besides a contamination, but the, referencing the three-phase,
Yep.
that compactor right now is using a single-phase with a variable speed drive. So that, that's not the issue. You can have a single-phase piece of equipment down there. The, the issue has always been Unitil's, Unitil's.
Their end rates.
Their statement saying that they don't think that they could provide enough electricity to the site
Yeah.
for different pieces of equipment to operate at the same time.
Right.
So it's never been an issue as to whether it can be a single-phase or not, it's the amount of electricity. Because you can put anything with a variable speed drive in there.
Because the wires are just so big. And is that Unitil service territory where the dump is now?
Yeah, they stop, ever-source starts.
They're ever-source.
Yeah, Unitil.
He's in front of my house.
Ever-source.
Oh, interesting.
104.
Yep.
There you go.
It's right there.
Yeah.
That would only be three foot holes.
Yeah. So, but as far as the, the chapter, in regards to your earlier comment to stuff that, you know, it was full of opinion and stuff like that. I've read it and reread it and everything and, and it's, it's just factual information until you get to the.
Future measures.
Yeah, the future measures. So the front part of it could be gone through, we could finish going through it. That is a good foundation for a chapter. You know, I used the New Hampshire Solid Waste Chapter as a guide to write it. And so, you know, the, the crux of it could be worked on.
Yep.
The objectives and that, that is, you know, subjective.
Agreed. So where were we and do we want to try to get through another couple pages?
There's only a page and a half left.
Yeah, we were, there's, they have slide numbers at the bottom. I think we had not really started 9.4. And so 9.4 has a part on current location upgrades, new challenges and concerns. And I have my comments, I, I kind of wonder if there is an area there to add some more specificity in current location and maybe incorporate some of that, which would be helpful for people. And then the 9, 5 and 9, 6 were largely just bullet point objectives and some of them are, you know, kind of broad statements that no one agrees, but they could also be changed to say, you know, based on, or sorry, the town has options. They, you know, can continue to use the existing site which has these limitations in terms of where you can build, that kind of thing. And again, I'm paraphrasing and I need to reread that report. And the town can always consider, although cost is a factor, a, a new location in town which would have concerns regarding appropriate sighting and those types of things. Because I don't think you, we need to offer any opinion right in the master plan to tell people, here's how you should think about what we need to do as long as.
It wasn't written that way.
Right, no, I, I just mean by general. And so one of the things I liked, and I was, I mentioned to Scott when I, when he first got here is I liked that at the very least in the areas report, even though they have a recommendation, they listed out a number of potential options and just to sort of help wrap your head around all the different things that could be done, whether or not they're the best for Canterbury is a different question.
And my takeaway with the areas report is that their recommendation isn't necessarily a recommendation, it's the most cost. It, it's the one that has the least cost.
Agreed, yeah.
The cheapest. So it's not necessarily one's better than the other, it's, this is bottom dollar, this is what you should do. As opposed to the bigger picture of, is PFAS at the dump? You know, how should we handle this? What should we do? By the way, did you ever get your testing done or?
I know, there's a long line.
A what?
There's a long line of people wanting PFAS right now, so labs are.
Who's, who does the, is it like a private, I was just curious.
It's her or the agency?
It is, no, it's a private agency.
Yeah, very expensive.
I'll, I can ask you the name of it.
Okay. I guess my preference would be, and I think I have some, thus here, that we can go through, you know, existing things we had, but I would like an opportunity to just read the report in a little more detail to be able to, to the extent we can tweak or add some of the current location stuff to have the up-to-date.
Sorry, I just want to clarify. It's the long list to get Crane Neck tested. We have filtration at the house, so we know it's not at our house. So it's the list to get, you can't like call Heritage and say test my pond, but they'll test your house.
Interesting.
No, it just was, all came to a head in June, so I was just wondering if you had made any headway on that, I was just curious.
So we decided a, a, a month ago or two weeks ago to, to, you know, await this report before continuing on the a master plan chapter.
But then to sort of expeditiously.
Yeah, but I, I, I feel like I'm out of loop because we just got it this afternoon.
Right, so, and I think we have, we have a, our next meeting is, obviously we've got the public sessions ahead of time and then the subdivisions, so that'll be a lot of time, but I would be good putting it two meetings out from now. I'll, you know, I certainly can commit to coming with any suggested changes that I have based on that. I'll you know I certainly can commit to coming with any suggested changes that I have based on that. Would that work for everyone else, you know, that'll be sort of our priority for two sessions out, so it gets us past the the big subdivision in the listening session.
And I think with the goal of finishing.
With the goal of finishing it and then immediately scheduling the public hearing to then have the public hearing portion.
Yeah.
And the the turnaround on the public hearing portion can be pretty quick, so it can be you know the two and a half or three weeks, whatever the.
So moved.
Alright, so uh is there a second for we'll put this on the agenda for two meetings out and the goal to have a final version at that meeting and. Schedule the public hearing the next meeting after that, three three meetings out.
Seconded.
I'm sorry, I saw a pause on your face, did you get?
When people do that, I tend to just pick one.
We both got seconded at the same time.
Oh, you were worried about who was saying, I was like making sure you just got so two meetings out for the agenda.
Sorry. Oh, sorry, no, I was kidding, he seconded.
Okay, gotcha.
Well, who was it, who won?
Uh Megan.
I did hear a little quicker than I was, I'm getting old.
Alright, uh all in favor?
I'm.
All right.
All opposed, alright, um.
Cal, good question.
Any new business, yes?
Not new business, what did I volunteer for for the listening sessions?
Uh that's in the minutes from the previous one.
Cluster.
Clusters, that's right, thank you.
Cluster, because it's me, you and Greg.
There we go.
And that's the next meeting, right?
Yeah.
Yes, so five thirty is when you guys need to show up and set town hall.
Yeah.
Right. At the. And then we will walk back over here, cause I imagine the. Did you notice or or do we need to post a meeting differently?
Um it's probably best that we come back here because we have the the meeting system in case people wanna zoom in.
Yeah.
Alright.
Um it's a lot harder to.
That works for me, that's what I would expect, I just wanna make sure we didn't accidentally notice it differently or not say that the seventy PM meeting would be here.
I'll double check with Michelle.
Okay, I don't know if the notice necessarily needed to go out yet, cause we're still two weeks out.
Uh well, it's also because they're so close to each other, if there is a change in venue.
Each hour.
It's more like changing conference room than changing buildings of how small this is, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Nice, okay.
Um we have made that mistake before, it wasn't a big deal, we just get a lot of signage.
Alright, um any new business?
I'd like to bring up one thing we discussed last week was about is an ADU counted towards uh our permit cap. Uh I think Lowden recalled that we talked about this before and that it was, that's my recollection too, but do we have to do anything. Officially to make that policy? Or make it not policy?
I don't, I don't think we do, um I did have a chance to look at this Greg and the reason is I just pulled it up, so eleven point one is building permits, it's. The number of new dwelling units that will be permitted and then you know, that's two of the two of the three words of accessory dwelling unit, so I think no one would be able to make a a good argument that it's not included.
Yeah. So it was a question brought up by Ken Folsom, right, the the building permit, I mean our building inspector had a question about it.
So that's.
That could really throw a monkey wrench into the whole work because detached and attached are allowed by right. So you could skew that number real quick.
Well, they're allowed as a use, but that doesn't necessarily mean that you don't, if something else exists.
Detached may put you in a queue if you.
So do we wanna um take a vote or something?
But but well, yeah, sorry.
No, not official on by right.
What I was going to say though is I don't think we are the right person, cause it's a it's a zoning like interpretation of the zoning ordinance is really kind of a new thing and so what the town.
You're still need a permit.
There's still need to be. It's all about that.
And so what the town.
Um every building needs a building.
It's part of innovative land use law thing.
No, it's not, it's not a primary residence.
Alright, so.
There's still need a building.
Chris, we'll circle up this, so the the question in terms of whether we are the one who needs to have an interpretation of that and I think. Right now with the SASQ, it's the town through the selectmen and the town administrator are responsible for enforcing this. And to the extent they make a decision, you know, they have to interpret this piece, to the extent they make a decision that says this counts towards the cap and someone comes and they ask for a permit, they say we're already at the cap. Any decision they make can be appealed to the zoning board because it it's a decision that interprets the zoning ordinance, so whether we need to resolve it, um.
Are we leaving it hanging out there or is there something we can do to di- direct the construction of it by when it comes to the ZVA if that ever happens?
Well, I I would suggest that Scott is our as our selectmen's representative is the best person to sort of, you know, we we had a discussion and he can take whatever and they'll.
Yeah, and we the select board has not had a discussion about this yet, so I'll take it back to the select board and.
Yeah.
I mean it seems to me, it seems pretty.
Obvious from the language of the ordinance, yeah.
Obvious, that it does. Yeah.
Right, and so you know ultimately they they choose how they wanna apply it and if anyone thinks they're doing it wrong, they can go to the ZVA for sort of a challenge. Alright, thanks for the reminder on that Greg, any other new business, uh any?
Uh yeah, sorry, one other thing, uh.
I do wanna go.
We have the updated. Checklists that have never been final finally approved, I believe.
Blended use regulations.
So we just need to get it in the uh.
So we sent um that was on the agenda like four, five meetings ago, but it got pushed cause we were out of time. I think I put it on the, I sent it out to everybody for review and I didn't get any comments back, so um I don't know where you guys want it.
I thought we pretty much resolved it like it's ready to go, didn't we, it's like.
We did in the subcommittee, yeah.
I do my.
But it had to be brought before the board.
Yeah.
So maybe I could recirculate the final drafts that came out of the subcommittee and you guys can say yea or nay at the next meeting.
Yeah, can we have it, so two meetings from now, so we're not.
Two meetings, okay.
Cause I feel like we're gonna if there's a real potential to go late on the next one, so we'll do two meetings.
And we just adopt them because that's a regulation, right?
And do you mind resending that email to everyone so they have it currently, thanks.
Thank you.
Are there any public comment? Alright.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.